...for that, we can do that. And that's what makes this training so very unique.
That sounds fantastic. We probably need all of that, but three days might not be enough, or we might need a longer training. But I also do think that the assessment is important because, I mean, if we have implicit bias, if I have implicit bias, and no doubt I do, I don't really know what it is necessarily. That's the nature of it being implicit. So for me to have some kind of way to measure that and test it and then see if I've made any progress is key. So hopefully, we can carry that back and see how we can incorporate that into the training. Also, at the end of it, if people have implicit bias, it might help us better understand where they should work and what jobs they should, you know, how they could function while they're still working on it, if that makes any sense.
Madam Chair, Councilman Gordon, absolutely makes sense. And part of that will be captured through the Attitude Survey as well, so it should cover that as well.
That sounds very good. And I'm also curious about how we're going to be coordinating or interfacing with other departments. You know, we have an Equity Division now in the Coordinator's Office, and we have an Innovation Team that's working on some of these things. And I think one of the problems here is we get siloed in our own departments and doing our own things. And I want to make sure that there's some good partnership there. And so our Coordinator for this effort maybe should be communicating, or there's ways to check in, and with you and with the Chief. For those others, do we have a systematic way of doing that yet?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, absolutely. And so I will tell you that the Chief, she has me, I've scheduled to meet with Mr. David Rubidore of NCR tomorrow morning, I believe. And also, we'll be meeting with Ms. Joyce Steffens and Ms. Julian Larson as well to get them up to speed, educate them on the National Initiative, because it is important that a lot of this work will touch on a lot of the efforts that are already ongoing in the city. And it's important to make sure that, as you mentioned, that we don't operate in silos. This is such important work. And there's a lot of other people out there who've been doing work in this area, so we want to make sure that we enhance and build upon that.
I've just got two more things, Madam President. I'll try to restrict it to the two, and one of them is maybe more of a comment. And this has to do with the reconciliation process. And I'm hoping that we can reach out also to our Community Engagement Department and see how to do that. But when I was reading it, I was noticing that a lot of it is focused on the police and then particular individual communities. And what I think will be important is that the city as a whole has an opportunity to be exposed to this and understand it. That would mean even the predominantly white, upper-middle-class parts of the city who may be oblivious that there's even a problem or a need to reconcile anything. However, that oblivion has slowly been eroding away over the last few months because of what's happening in the national and the local setting. And that's really significant. And it's sort of, there's an awareness throughout the city now that there's a divide that some people didn't see in the way government, city, police are treating our citizens. And I think so, and you mentioned South Africa, and of course, they had a very public and very broad reconciliation process. And so I'm just hoping, and I want to encourage the group, to look at how they can do that as they have their more focused meetings and their narratives and storytelling to bring in more diverse communities so they can hear the different stories that we all have and the different narratives and understand maybe where the commonality is. And you could just take that, and you can respond to it if you want to, but I'll go ahead to my second question. And this really has to do with the policy and recommendations. I think it's very significant that we're going to get an outside, external review of our policies, and we're going to get, look at other model policies. But I want to make sure that if we change our policies, we can do it in a public way, that there can be community input, and that the council can play a role in that. And if we, if we, I would, of course, as a council member, want the opportunity to vote to approve significant policy changes, and then for that to carry some weight with the department. And so if we make a use-of-force policy change and it's very public, we have the opportunity to vote on it. And then if it's going to be changed later, we hear about it. So I just want, and I know we have a unique charter, I know the council doesn't necessarily play as big a role in managing the Police Department as I might like, I know that stuff. But nevertheless, I think it's really important if those policy changes are going to be taken seriously and carry weight and have the confidence of the public and everyone behind them that somehow we work that into the process, where there's a review and consent of some kind, at least by officials.
So, Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, absolutely. Chief Harto, one of the things that she has really focused on in terms of MPD 2.0 cultural change is also, we talk about sustainability, is looking at our policies, because they are far broader than just how we, as a police department, conduct our operations. They do have an impact on our community. Some of those policy changes, the Chief has worked closely with our City Attorney, Susan Siegel, whether it's regarding driver's licenses, driver's arrests, things that cause disparate impact, even though they may have unintended consequences that we've known of. So, but also transparency is very important in terms of those policy reviews. That would also mean making sure that our team from the Police Conduct Oversight Commission that also has a policy team built in to make sure that they're aware, that they have input as well in those, and of course, our community as well. So part of that, you know, that reconciliation piece, that could absolutely be community members saying that, you know, this policy has impacted us in a way that you may not have known. And so it's us making sure that we have the folks at the table to examine those and look at how we can best move forward.
And one of the policies maybe we can work on is, how do we determine the policy? What's the process for that? And how do we change the policy later too, so that it's clear and everybody understands? Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion this year yet, and so thanks to everyone who kind of brought this together in this time period so that we could have this presentation before we wrap up our work for the year. You know, the shooting of Jamar Clark and the protests have really raised the public consciousness about something that folks have been working on in the city for a long time. And I think it's a testament to the leadership of the Chief and the Mayor, Council President and Vice President, Chair Yang, Councilmember Gordon, all the people that have long recognized this as an issue in our city and who have committed to the work, so that we're ready to respond to the really, what I see, at least in my ward and the 10th Ward, as a huge increase in the consciousness of this issue. So that's just a comment and thanks. I wanted to say that, and maybe it's a question or just a comment, but I see in my own constituents a real desire to engage about issues of police reform, about racial justice, about bigger issues of economic justice. There's a huge desire for that in my neighborhood organizations, across my ward. And so I want to make sure that I'm doing that in a way that's coordinated with other efforts at the city. So, you know, I know there's staff here from other departments. I think this goes well beyond the work of this initiative and the work of the MPD. So that could just be a comment that I've observed a real need to have a bigger conversation in our city, and I think a lot of us will be looking for ways to coordinate with this work, but also kind of go beyond this and think through how our own communities can engage in this, and how we can really create, well, it's going to be a lot of long-term work, but give people the opportunity now where there's really this kind of more immediate desire to, you know, communicate with all of us about what's happening in our city. And I want to thank Chief Harto for joining us as well, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do apologize for being late. I had a critical meeting that I had to be at. But I do want to thank the council and certainly thank Mayor Hodges as well for your support in all that we've done with the National Initiative. I certainly want to thank Mark Kaplechak from the DOJ. You know, three years ago, when I became Chief, a lot of what we were trying to do was to improve public trust. And one of the first things I asked for was the Office of Justice Programs to come in and take a look at our discipline process. And that was just a step. And now we're building on it with the National Initiative. These are long-term issues, and Councilmember Bender brought up, you know, utilizing other community members, that's critical. There's going to be points where we need to bring various people in to have a louder voice, to be able to track and look at what we do. But it certainly is more of a long-term piece, and we have different processes now that allow for that voice to be heard. And I think that's where we'll be the most successful.
All right, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to go back to the issue Councilmember Gordon raised about implicit bias, surveying and training. I didn't really know very much about this till I had the opportunity to talk to Representative Dean about it last week, and I thought his educating me about it was really enlightening, and it seems as though that would be a very critical piece of anything we would do. Any of us probably could sit here and say, well, we don't think we're racist, but we don't really know until we go through that kind of process where we're coming from. And I just think, like many other issues, one person talking to another, the relationship I have with Representative Dean really informed me on this issue and made me think that this is something that was a critical part. And so I hope that we take that really seriously, perhaps not just at the police level, but potentially citywide as part of our human resources effort. And so I just wanted to chime in on that, because I'm not very vocal on any of these issues, but it seems to me the first step is just simply finding out where you're at.
And Madam Chair, if I could add, and Councilmember Goodman, when we began the implicit bias training, the fair and partial policing training, we did offer that training to council, and we have community members participating. And I think at the next opportunity that any of you who'd like to participate in that training, I think would be very welcome, and it'd be very enlightening for you to be able to see exactly what the officers go through, and as you say, understand your own implicit bias.
Thank you. And I'll just note to Councilmember Goodman's point that the opportunity for our enterprise as a whole, not just the Police Department, but all departments to participate in just this type of training, maybe not exactly how it was prepared here, which seems like a good model, but some type of implicit bias training has been anticipated and asked for actually for some time. And I know that the Coordinator's Office has been trying to prepare the groundwork to allow us to do that. And it seems like with our staff that are now on board and the Coordinator's Office, that this is hopefully teed up and more ready to go. And I want to thank, actually, Councilmember Gordon, whose work several years ago in partnership with other councilmembers helped bring that forward and those ideas of enterprise-wide work. So, anything more, Councilmember Goodman?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice Presidents. I have a couple of questions, and the first one might have been maybe kind of asked for already, but I just wanted to get clarification with regards to council members. I mean, is there a point in the process where we can or should participate?
Are you talking about the training?
Just.
Or in the process?
The whole process.
Absolutely, and if you want to talk about it at one point.
Yes, Madam Chair, Councilmember Yang. So, yes, there's several, there's several components that this training goes through. Certainly, those could be the reconciliation process. Many of you represent constituents within your wards who have felt marginalized, who have felt harmed or aggrieved. Maybe that's a, it's a conduit of you bringing that information forward, whether it's facilitating, helping us facilitate those meetings, that could be part of that as well. As I also mentioned, part of the procedural justice implicit bias training has built-in components where if there are areas that come up or that impact your particular ward, whether it's mental health, homelessness, these are things that the Chief, as part of this flexibility of the model, she can say, let's make sure this, Councilmember Yang brought forward this issue of mental health issues within his ward. The officers in the 4th Precinct, this would be a good component for that training, or the officers citywide. So there are definitely ways where your input is valued, and we would want to, to have that, so.
Okay. And this is, this is much more of a clerical issue, but, you know, with regards to this initiative and the updates that will, let's say, come through council in the future, I mean, will it be coming through COW, or will it go through Public Safety? Have you guys thought about that?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Yang, I guess I would look to your recommendations for that. There's a multitude of ways we can do it, but we want to do it that's most effective. So if COW is the best way to do it, we can do that.
And I'll just note, we kind of often partner on this. This was really a little bit more of taking advantage of an opportunity and the importance of having the entire council listen. But clearly, the Public Safety Committee is where policy work moves forward on public safety-related items, so. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems to me that a huge part of the implicit bias is your understanding of diverse communities, and a big part of your understanding of diverse communities is who you work with. And I know that Deputy Chief, Chief, our Mayor, and Councilmember Yang have been deeply involved in trying to diversify our Minneapolis Police Department, specifically recruit more communities of color. And I was just wondering how, well, any update on those efforts, plus how those efforts would dovetail with the initiative for building community trust and justice?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Frye, we have 22% diversity currently on the Police Department. I'm happy to report our last CSO class that we've just given conditional job offers to are at about a 68% diversity.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again? I didn't quite hear the second part.
The last Community Service Officer class that we just gave conditional job offers to are 68% diverse.
Wow.
And I'm happy to report there's several women in that group as well. So we continue to really work hard in diversifying this department. We do that in large part with our Community Service Officer Program. That's where we get our largest amount of diversity. But we're looking to all of you and many of our community partners in doing that. I will tell you, it is very challenging in this country today to recruit police officers, and frankly, to recruit officers of color. I am mortified with how my officers of color were treated in the last three weeks.
Thank you.
Council President Johnson.
Thank you for saying that. I want to make sure when we, and I've lost the screen that talks about the procedures going forward, that when we talk about unique interventions, that we don't lose sight of some sort of, what would you call it, quantifying, some sort of discussion with communities that are heavily affected by crime. And their problems are unique. It hardens people's attitudes in the community when they live under circumstances that are unique across the city. And so I really want to make sure that, you know, I'm kind of echoing with Councilmember Kano here, that we talk in some way and list working with communities that are heavily impacted by crime, that that's a really unique population. And a lot of people across the city have no clue as to, you know, what it means to be awakened and evacuated from your home at 2:00 in the morning because someone in a car has knocked out the gas meter for the block, and those kind of things. That's, a portion of our city's population lives in very, very different circumstances than the rest of the city. So I want to make sure we address that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Council President Johnson, I want to make a comment regarding that. We absolutely agree with that, and oftentimes, people are speaking on behalf of others, and I get the calls, as do my officers, and the comments of how often they want to see police and how that's reassuring, and then there's others who don't want to see police. We're constantly balancing the needs and the requests, and the ideas of what it means to feel safe and be safe, and what that looks like. And we need to hear the voice of those who actually live in those areas.
Thank you.
And finally, we have comment from the Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much for having this on the agenda today. I think it's important to note in light of recent events that this is something with which we, as a city, have been involved with since March, and that our application and our intention to be involved goes to the beginning of the year. And it's been a struggle sometimes to get the word out about the National Initiative, in part because it's, explaining it is reflective of the nature of the work itself, which is ongoing, daily, day-by-day, relationship-building over time. It's not flashy, it's not one thing all at once, it's not like there is some magic way to snap our fingers and have the kind of systemic change that we wish for occur. And so the ability to highlight the fact that we, as a city, have been involved in this National Initiative, I want to give a lot of credit to the Chief for her leadership here and for her vision here, understanding that in the 21st century, policing in the 21st century is going to and does look different than it's looked in the past if we're going to move forward together as a community. So it's, it's, my hope is that this presentation today, the way the work's been laid out, the fact that it is transforming over time, that it's responsive to new conditions and new needs, always with an eye toward having the best possible police-community relations, conveys a willingness on the city's part to address seemingly intractable issues by doing the long-term, difficult work that needs doing to get the results that we want. We were selected as a city in part because of the strides we were already making as a city. The Body Cam Initiative, the early intervention system work moving forward, MPD 2.0, and the way the Chief has been envisioning the future of the department. All of that made us a city ready to take it to this next level, and a clear vision in leadership to want to take this to the next level. This isn't just about making nice. This isn't just about, oh, at the last minute, we need to be responsive to an issue that people have raised recently. This is, we've been at this a long time, that we have had this vision for a while now, and we are dedicated and committed to moving forward on it day by day by day, that this isn't about change, this is about transformation, and that we, as a city, are dedicated to transforming the relationship that our officers have with the community and that our community has with our officers. The National Initiative is not designed to do everything. It's not designed to solve every equity problem we have in the city. It's not designed to address issues of workforce needs, educational needs, housing needs, but it is designed to, in a focused way, grapple with one of the biggest challenges we face in our community. And frankly, I'm proud of the fact that we are part of the National Initiative. I'm proud of the fact that we've been part of it a long time and that it's already been on the ground. And I'm proud of what is represented in this implementation plan and that we've already taken steps and are in the process of taking steps to move forward on it.
All right. I'm not seeing further questions from my colleagues. I didn't know if the Chief, if you had anything more you wanted to add, because I think we're ready to turn to if, we invited, if people wanted to make comment, that they are welcome to do so.
Madam Chair and Council, I think the Mayor said it well, so I will end there.
Okay. Well, I thank you very much for being here, as well as the Mayor, and I want to thank Deputy Chief for a really great presentation, and I want to also thank the commitment of the Police Department to participating in this effort. This was a very robust update. I think we're all looking forward to what are these implementation steps, how do they continue to roll out, and how can we continue to support them in, as they move forward? So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we did have, I think, a few people signed up. You didn't have to sign up, but if people would like to make public comment, maybe I could just see how many hands of who would like to do so. There's a good handful of folks, and if you wouldn't mind maybe keeping your comments to kind of that two-to-three-minute timeframe, just so everybody gets a chance. I'm not sure if there were people in the hall as well. And maybe I will just go from this end over that way, if that's all right. Anybody over here? I don't have a list, so. Yes, sir. If you want to come up forward, and then if folks have signed up, I'm happy to take that list. I think only a couple did, though.
Madam Chair, council members, my name's Chuck Churchick. I live at 2112 Portland Avenue in Minneapolis. The "F" has to do with, nothing to do with this council, it has nothing to do with this issue. It's part of a protest at the university, so don't think of pink elephants and ignore the "F" on my forehead. I have just two comments. I was encouraged by some of the things I heard, particularly from Deputy Chief Arredondo, who said this is not something that's going to end up to three years, and Councilmember Gordon saying that we needed to have more community input on these decisions that are going to be made down the line, and Councilmember Bender's talking about a bigger conversation. So that was encouraging. But one thing I didn't see in the plan was that there is no place currently, and I don't, there's no structure or mechanism or forum for an ongoing discussion between community and police officers, a public, community, collective, ongoing discussion on these issues. And I didn't, maybe they thought that this would grow organically out of the process during these three years, but I think we need that. The Chief's Citizens Advisory Council is such a body, but it meets in private, and it's by invitation only. The Implementation Committees for the Office of Justice Programs and Recommendations is also, they also meet in private. And there's, the Police Conduct Oversight Commission meets in public, and I'm encouraged by their vision statement, which says that to be the citizen advisory group, the community relies on to openly discuss policy and procedures. But I've been attending their meetings, there isn't hardly any open discussion, even among the council, the commission members, on the studies that they have been putting forward, which are remarkable studies, let alone discussion with the community. They take comments, but there's not really this ongoing discussion. And I think we need some mechanism for that, to involve the people that are in the streets, that were in the streets at the 4th Precinct, involve particularly those people. And I think there's much more support than we realize for. I'm almost full-time at the University of Minnesota campus, and I am amazed by how much support there is for those people. And to involve people who think that the function of the police is a mechanism for society uses, that society uses for the overclass to control the underclass, in the words of a former police chief of this city, who was police chief for a decade, he uses that terminology. We have to involve those people in on an ongoing basis. And one, just one quick other comment, I think there might be a problem that there's a lack of political will. My experience, some of you on the Public Safety Committee have received a lot of my emails and copies of a lot of my emails, and I have asked for things that I think are no drainers. For one public official to come out and say for the Minneapolis Peace Department to have unintentionally associated itself with a raffle title called "Tased and Blazed," I couldn't get anyone to come out and say, it took me 101 days to get one public official to come out and say publicly that that was inappropriate. I think that any, anytime that anyone makes a critical statement of the Police Department, we're seen as, you're either for us or you're against us. And I think there's a reluctance on the part of public officials to be seen in that light. And I think if you look at the statements, the case summaries and case synopses on the PCOC website, 15 more seconds, you will see that the biggest problem is language issues, and there's a lack of respect, and it's widespread, it's much more widespread than I would have imagined. If you just look at the complaints, a lot of these complaints aren't sustained, but either a lot of community and people are in a conspiracy to lie about how officers are treating them, and there's no one who will ask, no one who will invite the Chief in to say, do we have a problem there?
Thank you, Mr. Churchick.
Sorry I went on so long. Thank you very much.
I'm going to invite, if people wouldn't mind, please, after you speak, if you could go sign up, it's just make sure you're part of the public record then, and that is what the clerk asked me to announce. So, anyone else, if you want to just come forward?
My name is Scott Smedberg. I live at 115 West 27th Street. I like to say that Mr. Churchick's thing, either you're for or against the police, is a huge part of the problem, and that's why I hesitate to speak in public. I live in one of those places where more crack cocaine was sold on my front stoop than the rest of the 10th Ward put together. It's cleaned up in recent days. I have called 911 a lot, and I'm very concerned, living for many, many years right in the middle of this situation, and my confidence in the police has made me, every time I call 911, think, will I regret this for the rest of my life? Will another life end? And this makes it very hard. I want to commend Councilmember Gordon. I'm also an educator for the kind of things that he's pursuing. I also want to say that I have lived a car-free life since I was 18, and I've worked at Lucy Laney, I've worked at Nellie Stone Johnson, I've worked extensively at Falwell Park. I've been all over the North Side on bike, on bus, my whole life, and I have seen a lot more than many people have seen. And it needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed now. I think we all agree about the problem, and this kind of not solving it is not okay. We need to have policing that protects and serves. And I will say, I could tell a lot of anecdotal stories of things not being done professionally or correctly, and I could tell a couple wonderful stories of very good policing. I've seen it all, and I just encourage you to move forward and fix this problem now. And I don't know much about this initiative or other initiatives, but the time is now to fix the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could, please, sign in over by the clerk. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir? Either one? Either one?
Madam Chair.
If you want to let us know your name.
My name is Amanda Brodeig. I'm a certified student attorney at the University of St. Thomas School of Law, and I'm enrolled in the Community Justice Project, which is a civil rights legal clinic, under the purview of Professor Nikima Levy-Pounds. The clinic has been working tirelessly on holistically overhauling our policing system. With the blessing of the National Initiative, the clinic is proposing to create a complimentary criminal justice reform task force to give the community an active and powerful voice for comprehensive reform. In addition, last spring, as many of you know, the clinic worked vigorously to repeal spitting and lurking. These were outdated laws that disproportionately targeted people of color and low-income individuals. There are more ordinances that need to be repealed, and we're conducting research and collecting data to continue to repeal these unjust laws. Through the clinic's advocacy, we met with Dr. Tracy Cassie and Mark Kepelhoff of the National Initiative. We're looking forward to partnering with the National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice in the next three years. It is clear from the recent occupation of the 4th Precinct that Minneapolis is crying out for reform. Part of building community trust is open communication, and it's imperative during this time that elected officials actively listen to the community. The changes the National Initiative and the city of Minneapolis are looking to bring about impact regular citizens, and there's no chance for reform unless their voices are heard. We, as a community, are looking forward to the implementation of this plan through transparency, honesty, and collaboration. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind signing in by the clerk, if you haven't, or you already did so. Okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Claudio Rivera. I live at 3222 Dupont Avenue North in the 4th Ward. And I just want to basically echo what Councilmember Gordon